Ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon, or good evening, I believe it is. We welcome you to this meeting of the Holtham City Council, twenty-seventh of February, two thousand and six. This meeting is called to order, and we begin with our pledge of allegiance and our invocation led by Councilmember Clark. So if you will stand at this time in...
Our Father, bless this council tonight as we gather to discuss the city's business. Give us wisdom and insight as we deliberate so that the decisions we make will be in the best interest of all our citizens. Bless our troops at home and around the world. Keep them safe as they seek to protect the rights of freedom for us in this country and for others around the world. In your name, amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I want to mention for the benefit of those in the audience, if you're following along on an agenda, item number seven and eight is scheduled to be consent agenda items. Those are being pulled off of consent and will be discussed and voted on as individual items. So if you want to speak on either item number seven or eight, if you will, go ahead and fill out one of the yellow speakers' request cards that you'll find just outside the door, and if you'll hand it to either Councilmember Sutton or Councilmember Branson, they'll see that it gets down here. Okay? We do have some announcements to be made tonight. Our Public Information Officer, Ms. Fran Burns.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a few announcements, and the first one concerns early voting, which continues through March the third, that's this Friday, in the Republican and Democratic primary elections. The Holtham City Recreation Center is a polling place, and the hours each day through Friday are 7:00 a.m. until 7:00 p.m., so if you care to vote, they're making it as convenient as possible for you. This is Severe Weather Awareness Week, and Holtham City Fire Rescue reminds everyone that preparation can save lives and help avoid injuries. Please check the city's website for a downloadable pamphlet on disaster preparation. Hard copies of the pamphlet were mailed as an insert in the February-March city newsletter and are also available in hard copy form at City Hall and at Fire Station One. And this is a copy of the insert that we did as part of the last newsletter. And on it, it talks about the difference between severe weather watches and warnings. It's got lists of things that you can put together in case things happen, to put together a kit, a disaster kit, and who to communicate with should a disaster occur. So if you don't have, if you didn't keep your copy, there are others available. Speaking of safety, child safety seat checkups are going to be available this Wednesday, March first, at 10:00 at the Ace Mart parking lot on Denton Highway, that's 5684. It's the Brahms Shopping Center up north of 820 on Denton Highway. Police personnel will be on hand to answer questions and inspect child safety seats to make sure that they're properly installed in vehicles. And I know when my grandson was just an infant, we had one of the officers looking at his safety seat and really got some really very good insight into how to properly use the seat. That's this Wednesday at 10:00 a.m. Photo contest, award ceremony, and workshop will take place this Thursday, March second, at 6:30 p.m. at the Holtham City Public Library. Contest judges will be present to answer questions and to discuss subjects such as what makes a good photograph and digital versus film photography. It should be a very interesting session. That's Wednes, excuse me, Thursday at 6:30 at the library. The first Holtham City Low-Cost Bay and Neuter Clinic will be available Monday, March sixth, at the Nancy P. Watkins Animal Care and Adoption Center here in Holtham City. Those interested in making an appointment for this service, which includes pet inoculations, should call 866-310-7387, and this is information that's on the website if you missed that phone number, or you can call me at City Hall, and I would be happy to give it to you. Arbor Day celebration will take place this year, 10:00 a.m., Saturday, March the eleventh, at the Holtham Recreation Center. Learn about proper tree planting and cultivation from a representative from the Texas Forest Service, and trees will be given to the first thirty families in attendance. The second Saturday of March is the official Holtham City Arbor Day. It was proclaimed by Jack Lewis several years ago, and so we keep that tradition going by having a celebration every March. A leprechaun hunt will take place at 2:00 p.m. Saturday, March the eleventh, at the Holtham City Public Library, and it's open to children of all ages and will include a craft, stories, and refreshments, and there's no admission charge. Fans of books on tape may be familiar with the voice of C.J. Critt. This local talent was, has recorded works by Janet Ivanovich, Patricia Cromwell, Larry McMurtry, and Barbara King-Salver. Those interested may join her for dinner at Hoffbraus Steak, 7:00 p.m. Wednesday, March fifteenth, for dinner with a Critter. Reservations are required and may be made by calling the library at 222-7790. Seating is limited. And with that, that's the announcements that I have.
Thank you, Ms. Burns. Members of the council, any questions or comments on any of the announcements that have just been made? Okay. Yes, Councilmember Reese?
I had a question on the child safety that you were talking about. My granddaughter just got a brand-new car seat, and so I'm needing my son and daughter-in-law to go get it checked out. Is that the only day, or can they, if they're unavailable to go due to work or what have you, can they go to the police department?
I believe they can call and make an appointment to have an officer meet them at the department, and we'll be able to receive.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, there being none, I will mention I do have an announcement to make. I'll make that announcement a little bit later in the meeting. But we'll go ahead and move now to the reports. Item number one is monthly financial report for December two thousand and five, and our Finance Director, Mr. Joel Welsh.
Good evening, council members. Enclosed in your packet is the monthly financial statement for the fiscal year ending January thirty-first, which is four of the twelve months of the fiscal year. Just touching on some of the highlights out of the executive summary that's included in your packet each time, I would mention that property tax collections are coming in a little bit faster than they would ordinarily be expected to be coming in right now. We've got nearly seventy-six percent is at the end of January. Normal is seventy-two percent or so. It doesn't mean we're going to collect more property taxes this year, but it does give us the benefit of having the money earlier, investing it a little longer, and giving us a little bit of extra money farther, as we go farther in the year. A notable bright spot, again, I feel like I'm a broken record at this point, but a notable bright spot is the sales tax collections continue to exceed expectations. That, of course, is beneficial not only to the general fund, but also to the other funds which receive sales tax, the EDC, the Crime District, and the Street Reconstruction Fund are all benefiting from stronger collections. And I've mentioned in the past a number of the reasons why this is occurring, and we're very pleased to see it in forecasting through to the end of the year. I have mentioned in the report that just due to some adjustments from the Appraisal District, property taxes will come in a little below budget, sales taxes are going to come in ahead of budget, and the two offset in the favor of the higher sales tax collection, so we're going to be okay there. As far as other revenues within the general fund, everything is tracking pretty much as expected. We're still seeing the likelihood of lower fines and forfeiture revenues from the municipal court. The caseload stabilized a bit, but we're still running a little bit behind from the last couple of years. And I know I'm reporting this because I'm in the financial end of the business. Want to also mention it is a judicial matter, and therefore, you know, how the court is run is, is a, is not in my venue. I'm just reporting that what's going on financially speaking. But as far as the expenditures in the general fund go, everyone is, again, staying pretty much within their budget allocations as appropriated back in October. I think as far as seasonally adjusting and looking at the year-to-date, things look good, with the exception, of course, of the grant revenue that we're asking you to recognize now for the fire department that is related back to Katrina, Katrina, the one that we had last year that came on this side. Was that Katrina? That was, yeah, it was Katrina. But Rita, yes. But, yeah, there was some grant money that came in relational to that, and, of course, we've asked you for a budget amendment on that. But as far as the performance of the stewards of the resources in the general fund, they have been faithful. In the water and sewer area, I would like to deviate a little bit from the report to talk about a topic that's related to our utility customers that is important for them, and that is the issue of the amount of privacy that can be exercised on their accounts. For example, if, you know, a lot of businesses actually sell their customer lists to other entities that do, you know, phone advertising, mail-out advertising, all forms of that. This, nobody's, nobody's pandering for the city's list right now, but we prefer to be a little proactive on that area. Whenever a new customer signs up for service with the city, there is a section on the application that tells them that they have the opportunity to exercise privacy on that account, which means if somebody asks for a list of our customers, we don't have to provide that. If someone calls and asks about information about that person's consumption, or their billing history, or their payment history, we don't provide that. And we'd resist it anyway, but if persons exercise privacy, we just say no. It's a, it's a real advantage that the customers have. Whenever this bill was passed in the mid-'90s, we, of course, polled all the customers we had at that time and gave them the opportunity to exercise privacy, and a great number did. And like I said, we also ask new customers, whenever they're filling out the application with this, if they want to do it or not. I will admit that if they are a little bit reluctant, we go ahead and advise them to exercise it, that it is something that's worthwhile in their situation. I would also mention that if, if there is a customer of the city that is not certain whether they have exercised their right to privacy or not, they can certainly call City Hall, 222-7700, and ask for the utility billing office, and one of the people in the office will be more than happy to look up their account and advise them whether they have or not. If that person wants to exercise the privacy, they can tell them right then, and we will turn the privacy on right then. One thing we won't do is if a person wants to take the privacy off of their account, we won't do that over the phone. They'll have to come in. But if they want to put it on, we try to help our customers with this if at all possible. But back to the financial report. The Water and Sewer Fund, of course, these, this four-month's performance is prior to the rain that we've seen this month, so revenues have continued to be much higher than what we expected. Of course, this is, February's been a rainy month. We're going to be watching to see what the impact that has on revenues. Most of my projections in this report are predicated on data through January. I would not be the slightest bit surprised if there is not some modification of these projections going into the future months after this month with, you know, hopefully seeing some more rain. As far as the issue of the sewer side of the house, of course, we do tend, we do review customer consumption in December, January, and February for determining what sewer bills are going to be for the next year. We look at the customer usage during that time. That is normally when we expect residential usage to be the lowest. This only applies to residential customers. But this is when we expect residential usage to be the lowest. We are in the process now of trying to review some of these accounts to see if the dry weather has had a market impact on consumption as far as the water side of the house goes. But I know that's been a subject that's come up with other cities, but I just wanted to advise you all that we're looking at that, and we'll go back to the manager with the recommendation after we get a little farther along in the study and can finally determine, you know, what impact the weather's really had. And we'll go back to the manager about that when we get to that point. I know it's a question that had come up once before, so I'm just trying to keep you all apprised on that. But as far as the other funds of the city, the other funds of the city are in, are in good shape in general. As I said, the revenues are pretty much on target, or in the case of the sales tax funds, they're exceeding target. And so that, operationally speaking, we're in pretty good shape. On the investment side of the house, our weighted average yield of the portfolio continues to go up, and as long as the Fed continues to raise the overnight rates, even though the yield curve is flat, those of you that know something about financial markets know that yield curves being flat is not, is not an ordinary occurrence. It usually means something's about to happen, but the Fed appears to be committed to continuing to increase the overnight rate, which has a beneficial impact on our yields. Our portfolio now is about fifty-fifty into either cash, meaning overnight investments, versus the longer-term investments of CDs and agencies, and that's had an impact of improving our yield as way, as well. We are, of course, we're constantly chasing our benchmark. One of these days, I really intend to catch it. But as long as the market continues to move up, we'll be chasing it a little while longer. But it's a good thing that we're moving forward each time.
Does that complete your report?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I have a question, and there may be others who have questions or comments. You mentioned in regard to the privacy issues a moment ago, that if a citizen wishes to exercise that option, that they could pick up the phone and call and talk with someone. In this modern day of electronics and email, can they send an email requesting that?
I hadn't even thought about that, sir, but in the, in that particular case, if they would provide for us their, their name, address, account number, I don't see why not.
Okay. Councilmember Sutton, I believe you have your line on.
Right. And the sales tax, Joel, while you were crunching these numbers, did you happen to speculate at what percentage of this increase in sales tax is a result of the audit findings in, that we found that businesses were incorrectly putting sales tax funds into Fort Worth versus Holtham City?
I have been monitoring that number, the prior-period collections versus the, the current ongoing collections, and I cannot, I've looked at it even as late as last week, and I just can't recall off the top of my head how much it's been this year in terms of actual dollars.
Because it looks like about twelve percent is what we're doing over the, I mean, roughly, just looking at the aggregate. It looks like about twelve percent, and I would estimate, how much of that do you think is that, would it be eight percent, or, you know, half of that, or maybe seventy-five percent of that twelve percent?
I would be hard-pressed for this year, but I can tell you that out of last year's numbers, the sales tax audit generated about ten percent of our increase was probably from the sales tax audit.
So, so in real growth, we're still seeing a growth in our sales tax of our city, even when we consider the additional funds that we're getting from that sales tax audit?
Even after the sales tax audit, even after the beer and wine sales, I say that we're seeing real growth.
Excellent.
I do believe there is real growth in that.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Lanford.
Thank you, Mayor White. Joel, when you were talking about calculating the sewage rates, obviously, that's going to be a difficult task, because, as you said, this is an unusual winter. There's a strong likelihood that people used more water in these three months than they ordinarily would have, and I think that's what you alluded to, and that was a concern. Let me ask you this. If your estimates and are turned out to be off somewhat, and we get further down the pack and we see that, that people's sewage rates have been set artificially too low or artificially too high, what is, what is your response as, as we go through time there?
Well, a lot of it's going to depend upon how we decide to treat the data that we get from, from looking at the averages, because, like I said, we use those, the, and yes, I do agree that, and I think I have mentioned this, that one of my fear theories is that consumptions will be higher, and we're going to be testing all the way through. We have a, a program within the system that pulls this data of those averages for us and lets us look at it, and we're pulling last year's reports that we still have copies of, and we'll be comparing these two. If, if it turned out, under our current system, if it turned out that in our estimates, we made a recommendation for changes that were too high or too low, it would probably go until the next review period. That's, that's probably what's going to happen. But these, but I would say that the chances of that happening would only be in individual cases, because we don't make a mass move. This system, or this program actually goes account-by-account comparing. So if it, even if it did happen, and I don't think it will, but if it did happen, it would only happen in certain accounts. It wouldn't actually happen in groups.
Right. So worst-case, if, if you looked at mine, and in mine, you estimated a little high of the worst-case scenario, well, I'd pay a little extra this year, but I'd adjust it next year.
Yes, so we'd look at the consumptions again. Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay, any other questions or comments for Mr. Welsh regarding the December two thousand and five financial report? Okay, there being none, I'm ready for motion regarding the desire of the council to take action on this report. Councilmember Sutton, followed by Councilmember Lanford.
I thank you, Mayor. Moved to approve the monthly financial report for January thirty-one, two thousand and six.
Councilmember Lanford?
As for a second.
Have a motion, a second, any discussion on that motion. If you will, register your vote, please, and it passes by unanimous vote. Item number two is the comprehensive annual financial report for fiscal year oh-four, oh-five. Mr. Mayor, you want to introduce this item for us, please?
Finance Director Joel Welsh is going to start us off with this item.
Thank you, sir. Our auditors, for the first year, this is their first year, are Weaver and Tidwell, LLP. This is the, the first time they've audited our books under the new agreement. This past Tuesday, they met with the Audit Committee. The Audit Committee was chaired by Ms. Reese, and the members of the Audit Committee were Mr. Clark and Mr. Holcomb, and they received the report from the, from the auditors. And Mr. Bob LaRitz is with us tonight. He is the partner responsible for this audit, and he will be making a presentation to the council tonight of his, of the firm's findings and, and his, his comments and opinions there upon.
Okay.
First of all, I want to thank the council and, and management of the city for entrusting the audit to Weaver and Tidwell.
You might pull up Mike a little bit closer, please.
He's staring me in the face here, but thank you, thank the city and the management for entrusting the audit to Weaver and Tidwell. It was our first year, and for a first-year audit, it went well. There's always a learning curve with a first-year audit of, they don't know what we're going to ask for, and we don't know what we're going to get, so for this, it went very well. Management and the Finance Department was very helpful in getting us the information we needed, and everything went pretty well, in, in our opinion. Financial statements were prepared by Charles and the Finance Department. Our responsibility is to audit the financial statements, not necessarily to prepare them. So what we did is we took, when Charles got the financial statements done, after we did the audit, we've gone through and reviewed them, given our suggestions to make sure they're all in accordance with the standards and, and things of that nature. And the result of that was our opinion is unqualified, which is the highest form of assurance that we can give on a set of financial statements. It's materially correct. We don't look at every transaction. Nobody wants us there for that long. Nobody wants to pay us to look at every transaction. So we use our judgment in testing and looking at different areas of the audit to come to that conclusion. Like I said, it was, it's the highest form of assurance that can be issued on a set of financial statements. Now, real briefly, I'll go through kind of a couple of the key points on the statements. Right after the opinion, there's a management's discussion and analysis that was prepared by the Finance Department. This is part of the new model that I guess is not so new anymore. It's been around for about three years, but their goal was to kind of make it a little more like an SEC or give more information, kind of going off that idea, and it tries to put the financial statements into a little more common terms, narrative of what's happened during the year, instead of trying to decipher the financial statements. And after that is a set of financial statements that did come about as part of the new change in the model, and what it did to a government was make it report almost like a business. Before governmental accounting had been almost more of a cash-basis-type flow of information, cash in, cash out, this is what we have left. The first two statements in here on pages fifteen, fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen are on a full accrual basis of counting, just like General Electric does, or just like everybody, you know, any other financial statement that's in accordance with the generally accepted accounting principles. So it, it changes to when revenues are earned and when expenses are incurred, instead of when they're received and paid, which was a big change for governmental accounting, adding debt and fixed assets and depreciation and things of that nature. And under that method of accounting, the governmental activities, which are your typical city government activities that aren't supposed to, that aren't FEGIT-driven, police, public safety, public works, general government, the equity, total net assets for those activities at the end of two thousand and five was forty-four million, meaning that the assets were in excess of the liabilities by forty-four million dollars. For the business-type activities, which are the water and sewer, and this year, the drainage was included, the net assets were twenty-one and a half million, both indicating that the different activities are in pretty good shape. After, after those two statements come, the statements like you used to see, the cash-basis more. Evidently, when they came up with this grand-new idea, not everybody thought it was a grand-new idea, so they're, make you show the old one as well as the new one. Just adds more, you know, information, I guess. But that one shows it in the fund, fund category, like everybody's kind of used to seeing, the general fund, the debt service fund. With the general fund being really the one that most people look at, because that's kind of the, more the health of the city. And the general fund at the end of two thousand and five had about three-point-six million dollars of fund balance, once again, indicating that it's in a, got the fund balance, it's not using that up rapidly. So that's a good, a good sign. And past that, the rest of the report is the footnotes that go into more detail on all the numbers in there. Those haven't changed very much from last year. One change was they made us put more information on the cash and investments of the city, different risks involving the interest rate risk, custodial risk, credit risk, things of that nature that became effective for this year.
Okay, thank you for that report. If you will remain, we may have some questions or comments by members of the council. Councilmember Hutchison and Councilmember Sutton.
Yes, Bob, the, the one, the statement you just made... Yes, Bob, the statement you just made about reporting the risks, is that reported as assets or is that reported as liabilities?
It's reporting the different risks related to cash and investments was the new standard on the asset side.
Oh, okay, okay.
The actual cash deposits and investments that are there.
Yeah, that just didn't strike me as something that we, you know, that we would report on the liability side. And I wondered where we would find that in the asset side.
It's on the asset side.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Sutton.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. The staff has done, I just want to make a comment. The staff has done an excellent job of providing a snapshot of the financial health of our city. And in addition, what it is, is it's a picture of what they've done with your tax money and my tax money, how they've used it, how they've been responsible with it. And I think that they have done an excellent job. One of the things that they didn't mention, because there is so much in this, but one of the things that's fascinating to look at is, for instance, I bet you didn't know, as I didn't know, that our real property net taxable value in Holom City, 1995, was $528 million. It has risen up to $1.14 billion. There's all kinds of cool stuff in here to show about how this city has grown in these past 10 years. The revenues, what they've done in this past 10 years. You will be amazed to look at some of that stuff. The ratio of our bonded debt to our assessed value, what that's done over. In other words, how much do we go in debt over these past 10 years? And where are we keeping it? We're 2% in debt, and I think that's a very, very excellent, healthy figure. But it shows what we've done over the years here in Holom City. And I just, now, some people will use this as a way to get to sleep at night, but other people will look at this like me and say, "This is pretty exciting stuff." So I just encourage you, can the citizens take a look at this at the City Secretary's office or get a copy of it? Brenda, great, fantastic. It's going to be on the webpage, even better, probably PDF. Fantastic. I really recommend getting this. But thank you for the work that you guys did. It was excellent to receive this and the work that the council members did.
Mr. Muir, you had a comment?
No, I was just going to say that it's going to be on our website. The last couple of years, it's been on our website.
Councilmember Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jim, did you happen to see that the revenue generated through Bingo? Did you see that line?
I didn't see that line. That's one of the things I didn't see.
Trust me, it's in there.
Man, wow. There's more that I have to read, then.
Okay, anything else? Thank you very much. I'm ready for a motion regarding the comprehensive annual financial report for fiscal '04-'05. Councilmember Reese and Councilmember Branson.
I move to approve the comprehensive annual financial report for fiscal year 2004-2005.
Councilmember Branson.
I'll second that motion.
Have a motion and a second to approve. We have no discussion on the motion. If you will, register your vote, and that motion passes by unanimous vote. Item number three is our monthly status report of all of our major capital improvement projects. And our city manager, Mr. Muir, is ready to make that.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council. As usual, we'll start with the street projects. The Reeve Street project, which was formed mostly by staff, is complete. It was completed shortly before the Holom Stampede. The Parish Salona project, which is the CDBG project where we're repaving Parish and Salona and putting sidewalks and place systems in there. That's still progressing. It's been a little bit delayed because of the Salona Drainage Improvement Project, which I'll address here in a little bit. But the county should be issuing, have already issued those bids, and those bids should be open sometime in April. A new project, for your knowledge, is a new traffic signal that we're planning to put in. And Mr. Hutchison is already getting happy about this. Browning and Dunson Traffic Signal. We did a traffic study out there, and we're going to put a four-way traffic signal out there. We've already opened the bids. It'll be at the next council meeting as far as the bid award. But it'll come with pedestrian crossings and the like, a typical four-light intersection. The intersection should be completed by September of this year. As far as drainage, the Little Fossil Creek Drainage Improvement, you've heard me talk in the past of the frustration with the Corps and the lack of their, and the loss of their funding and then getting the funding back in there and working with the U.S. Representative Kate Granger's office. The project is back online. The Corps, the Corps of Engineers has requested a letter from me restating the city's intent or the city's commitment to the project, which I'm gladly willing to give. But some of the parameters they're going over, related to the costs, are somewhat shocking in that what they're expecting us to do. So we're going to be sitting down with them to get them to account for some of the things that they're stating. And I'll be back to y'all hopefully by the next month during this report to give you an update on that. The Salona Circle Drainage Improvement Project, you've got that on consideration for tonight to award a contract. This will be the first project from the Drainage Fund that was recently implemented. So the staff is excited about that, and I'm sure those people that live over on Salona are very excited about it, too. Water and sewer issues. The Skyline Mobile Home Park and the Swan Street project is a little delayed. They were supposed to be finished by next month. There's no way in the world they're going to finish by next month, but it's probably going to be another 30 to 60 days. There's no, certainly can't be for weather days. We haven't had any rain, so... But we're working with them to get that thing finished up. On the Menace Water Main Project and the Highway 377 Water Main Project, we are still dealing with property appraisals and negotiating with the property owners. The Midway Waterline Project, this is a new one for your reference. This will go from Harrow Street to Carson. This is Phase 1. Phase 2, which will be done next year, will take it from Carson proceeding east along Midway to Menace. This will place a new water line, put a new water line in there, but it'll also provide for overlay for the entire street. But we're hoping to have the bid awarded by sometime in next month, have the contract started in April, and then be finished by August. As far as the building projects, there's no new developments with the recenter as far as negotiating the damage. We're still going with that. On the library, there has been some minor headway on the negotiations for the land, but the trial, if it does go to trial, it's scheduled to go to trial in May of '06. And I'll close with the Senior Center Project. The Senior Center Project is a quarter-million-dollar renovation at the Senior Center, which provides for mainly an expanded kitchen and new finishes on the bathrooms and the kitchen and the inside. That's kind of hit a little bit of a snag. It is back on track now. We've got some new construction superintendent out there now. The tiling in the bathrooms is finished. The, there's new grids for the drop-down ceilings have been done. The duct work has been tied into that or will be finished tying into that later this week. So we're still hoping to track for a contractual completion date of March 9. We are really hoping to have that thing done and have that thing in use by this, by now. And it's just gone slow, mainly from the contractor's standpoint. They've let some things drop. But we are committed to trying to get this thing done by early March and get those guys back in the Senior Center. They're still meeting at the Moose Lodge. The pit folks at Moose Lodge have been very, very gracious in letting them use that facility. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Councilmember Hutchison.
Yes, thank you, Tom, for putting the Browning and Dunson Traffic Signal report on there. I make mention of that, and I've long desired to have a traffic light at that particular intersection because as the traffic congestion is bad on Loop 820, there is a lot of diversion of traffic through Browning as it's the only one through-street from, through Holom City from 377 to Loop 820 coming in on the north side and on the east side. And that particular area is a place where there is a school crossing, too. And in the mornings, with the congestion, traffic congestion pretty heavy, it is a very heavy safety issue. And I've been, I've sat up there and watched before, and sometimes the cars are going pretty heavy speed, even though it is 20 miles per hour through the school zone. It gets, it gets pretty tense there sometimes, and it's a kind of a blind spot in a few places, too. So I'm really looking forward to seeing that four-way traffic.
Yeah, we've had, for the citizens, this is the first time Mr. Hutchison and I have talked about the intersection here. But we've had a lot of people comment on that intersection. And like I said, we did a traffic study on it out there, and it certainly warranted it. And it's, I know it's slowing coming, but it will be there.
Okay. Any further questions for Mr. Muir or comments regarding the capital improvement status report? Okay, there being none, we move to item number four, which is an update on the Clean Sweep. Mr. Puliska.
Thank you, Mayor. Mires of the council, citizens of Holom City. Tonight, you're going to hear a report from the city's inspection staff on the 5th District of Clean Sweep. Clean Sweep is a proactive code enforcement program that we initiated in 2003. And tonight, you will have a report on the 5th District, which is the first one for this year. At this point, I'd like to introduce our building official, Mr. Roy Castro.
Thank you, James. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, and citizens of Holom City. I'd like to take this time to go ahead and introduce my staff, our Code Enforcement Division. And we're going to start with our new employee, Richard Milias, one of our code inspectors. The next one is Dennis Black, also a code enforcement inspector, and our senior code inspector, Ms. Glenna Bachelor. Our PowerPoint presentation this evening that follows is going to detail how this department helps in the abatement of all the violations throughout Holom City. At the end of the presentation, we will open up the program for any questions that you might have. So without further delay, let us go ahead and proceed. I am going to go ahead and turn it over to Ms. Glenna Bachelor, and she will go ahead and direct the program for us.
Mayor White, councilmembers, citizens of Holom City. The function of code enforcement is to enforce city ordinances and bring about compliance. Failure to achieve can result in court proceedings and/or administrative action. The need for code enforcement is to maintain quality of life. Code enforcement personnel are designated by the city to carry out the provisions and city ordinances. The main reason we use, the main resources we utilize are the code of ordinances and zoning ordinance. This is not to say we don't or can't enforce all ordinances, but these are our primary focus. Complaints usually originate from citizens or inspectors. Once the department has been made aware of a violation, the inspector investigates the violation and takes action to contact the appropriate party to advise of the situation. Digital camera pictures are taken of all violations, work in progress, and final abatement. Notification can be done by door hanger, which affords opportunity to discuss problem with occupant if they are present, letter, mail to all parties, including property owner, tenant, mortgage company, et cetera, sign posted on property to visibly signify violation at property. Yellow tag can be posted on junk vehicles, commercial vehicle at residence, and parking on unapproved surface. These tools can be used independently or in combination to achieve maximum response. Once a violation has been initiated, the code officer will do a reinspection of the property at the appropriate time interval. This can be anywhere from 24 hours for a health or parking violation up to 10 days for the most common violations. Upon recheck of the property, either the violation is taken care of or abated, working, which means progress is being made to comply, or nothing has been done. In the case of abatement, pictures are taken of the property, and the case is closed. If progress is being made, pictures are also taken. Pictures are taken, and one of the following will occur.
Clean Sweep. Clean Sweep is a proactive code enforcement program that we initiated in 2003. And tonight, you will have a report on the 5th District, which is the first one for this year. At this point, I'd like to introduce our building official, Mr. Roy Castro.
Thank you, James. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, and citizens of Holom City. I'd like to take this time to go ahead and introduce my staff, our Code Enforcement Division. And we're going to start with our new employee, Richard Milias, one of our code inspectors. The next one is Dennis Black, also a code enforcement inspector, and our senior code inspector, Ms. Glenna Bachelor. Our PowerPoint presentation this evening that follows is going to detail how this department helps in the abatement of all the violations throughout Holom City. At the end of the presentation, we will open up the program for any questions that you might have. So without further delay, let us go ahead and proceed. I am going to go ahead and turn it over to Ms. Glenna Bachelor, and she will go ahead and direct the program for us.
Mayor White, councilmembers, citizens of Holom City. The function of code enforcement is to enforce city ordinances and bring about compliance. Failure to achieve can result in court proceedings and/or administrative action. The need for code enforcement is to maintain quality of life. Code enforcement personnel are designated by the city to carry out the provisions and city ordinances. The main reason we use, the main resources we utilize are the code of ordinances and zoning ordinance. This is not to say we don't or can't enforce all ordinances, but these are our primary focus. Complaints usually originate from citizens or inspectors. Once the department has been made aware of a violation, the inspector investigates the violation and takes action to contact the appropriate party to advise of the situation. Digital camera pictures are taken of all violations, work in progress, and final abatement. Notification can be done by door hanger, which affords opportunity to discuss problem with occupant if they are present, letter, mail to all parties, including property owner, tenant, mortgage company, et cetera, sign posted on property to visibly signify violation at property. Yellow tag can be posted on junk vehicles, commercial vehicle at residence, and parking on unapproved surface. These tools can be used independently or in combination to achieve maximum response. Once a violation has been initiated, the code officer will do a reinspection of the property at the appropriate time interval. This can be anywhere from 24 hours for a health or parking violation up to 10 days for the most common violations. Upon recheck of the property, either the violation is taken care of or abated, working, which means progress is being made to comply, or nothing has been done. In the case of abatement, pictures are taken of the property, and the case is closed. If progress is being made, pictures are also taken, and a further recheck inspection will be scheduled. Lastly, if nothing has been done, pictures are taken, and one of the following will occur. Either a final notice will be sent to the property owner and/or occupant, or a citation can be issued to property owner and/or tenant. The whole premise of code enforcement is to bring about compliance, so we try to work with each situation on an individual basis and handle accordingly. One tool is the municipal court system, and another is administrative order. These are the last and sometimes only recourse to take care of a situation. Some of the violations we encounter are the following with examples of before and after pictures: Junk trash debris, junk vehicles, high grass. Parking on unapproved surface. And substandard. This first property is a house that was scheduled with the hearings board and new owners were given time to refurbish, which has resulted in removing a block from this neighborhood. The second location is a commercial building that was removed by property owner after notification by the city, again removing a nuisance from the area. We have a project that was initiated a couple of years ago called Clean Sweep, and on January 18th of this year, we started canvassing the fifth section, which is outlined by Beach on the west, 28th on the north, Higgins on the east, and Belknap on the south. There are 409 parcels in this area with 299 not having any problems. 92 had junk trash debris, 50 violations of parking on unapproved surface, 45 junk vehicles were identified, 12 fences were found to be in disrepair, 10 graffiti areas on commercial and residential, four zoning violations included commercial vehicle at residence, vehicle sales at residence, and working on vehicle outside. Two miscellaneous violations were an unauthorized temporary carport and fire damage at a mobile home, one high grass at a business. 216 total violations were observed, with 167 having been abated to date. As Mr. Plisca mentioned, Clean Sweep is a proactive program in that a geographical area is defined that has numerous properties. GIS reports and maps are generated, and inspectors purposely check all angles visible from public view of each property to identify violations. This is a tedious and time-consuming task that is handled more effectively by a team of two officers. The reasoning behind this is that while one officer is in the truck preparing the paperwork to be left at the property, the other officer is outside the vehicle taking pictures of the violation for backup documentation and trying to make contact with someone at the property. This not only aids in tracking purposes, but witness factors obtained so that either officer can discuss with the responsible party. Clean Sweep is an ongoing process that will target future areas. One of the many benefits of this program is not only the outward appearance that is obtained, but the community is made aware of what to look for in maintaining their area. In closing, I would like to say that some cases get done in a relatively short period of time, and other situations can take much longer to get resolved. This can be a result of many factors like absentee owners, lack of resources, ignorance of the law, legal barriers like estates, bankruptcy, evictions, et cetera. Thank you for your time. Do you have any questions?
The council, do you have any questions for Glenna? Okay, I believe they're not. Mr. Plisca, do you have further comments?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you, Glenna. Mayor, Mr. Muir asked me to discuss political signage tonight as we are having an election at this time with the county, and certain circumstances have come up which we need to discuss. Political signage is only allowed on property, private property with the owner's permission. Political signs are also not allowed within the city's right-of-way and generally throughout Halton City, that is around nine and a half to 10 feet. That is measured from the back of curb. Generally speaking, too, you can detect right-of-way by the location of the utility poles. Also, they're specifically prohibited in the visibility triangle at intersections. The visibility triangle is measured from the property line 35 feet by 35 feet. If a site is located within a visibility triangle, code enforcement staff will remove that sign, or we will remove any sign on a complaint basis. Also, on private residential property, it is normally preferred that a sign be placed five feet from back of curb. We realize that nine and a half feet, which is the general right-of-way within the city, would be too far back, but generally the city has released a form that a sign placed on a property owner's residence or private yard, five feet from the back of curb. Again, we are addressing these political signage on a complaint basis this year.
Okay, members of the council, any questions or comments for Mr. Plisca on the political signs aspect of it? First, Councilmember Landford, and then Councilmember Branson.
Thanks, Mayor White. James, just to get right to the point, the signs that are in front of the rec center where voting is taking place, are those appropriately placed, that are there at the entryway? They look to be on city property and/or on a right-of-way?
Yes, they are appropriately placed in terms of distance from the right-of-way. The city has the early elections going on, so it is a polling place at this time. So with it being city property, they would need to secure the city's permission to have the signs there. I believe we did reach an agreement that we would allow them during early voting and during the day of the election, since it is a polling place, and they must be placed 100 feet away from the entrance into the polling place.
Is this a departure from past practice?
I was not in control of the department during that.
No, I'm just asking. I mean, I don't recall seeing those. I'm wondering if it's...
We haven't voted at the rec center in quite some time, so this may be the first time in quite some time we're used to seeing the signs there.
That's created a problem down there, I think. I drove by it this morning. This will probably be the last time you see it.
Well, and I'm glad to hear that, because if it's not, I mean, if there's something that we need to do, some action we need to take, some ordinance we need to look at, I was going to suggest that we staff draw that up.
Well, it's garnered some attention. And I asked them to deal with this part of Clean Sweep, because as they go through the Clean Sweep issues, they look at political signs as well. And the, this particular issue, you know, to try and yank them up now, I don't need that kind of problem right now. So we're going to just kind of ride it out. Early voting ends Saturday?
Saturday.
It'll be gone Saturday.
And then from that point on, the word will be...
We're going to be talking to them about, you're not going to be doing this.
That's what I wanted to hear, thank you.
Yes, the bottom line, the ordinance is clear. They must secure the property owner's permission. So therefore, if the city does not grant permission, therefore the signs will not be allowed. Yes, sir.
Councilmember Branson, and then Councilmember Hutchinson.
Thank you. My question backs up to before the political signs, because I thought he was, I thought you were getting up to address before you went to that. How that you will readdress within the 10 days the violations from Clean Sweep?
Oh, yes. Every violation, we generally give, well, not on every violation, there are some parking violations that we give 24 to 48-hour notices on, because a vehicle can be moved. But on most violations, the property owner needs time to abate them, because they're such a nature in terms of the amount of debris or so forth. So we generally give a 10-day period in which we allow the property owner to abate the problem, and then we will go back with that 10-day recheck. So yes, we are in the process of doing the 10-day recheck at Section 5.
I just thought that would be good for the citizens to know that because they saw a door hanger doesn't mean that it would be cured in 24 hours, that there was a 10-day recheck period.
Correct. And then thank you for bringing up and clarifying that. The door hanger is an excellent instrument. Not only it lets them know that we were there, it's a triplicate form. We have a copy, they have a copy, and a copy can go in the mail. And then we leave that information on the hanger if we don't make contact with the resident. Generally, we, again, they are door hangers, we try to place them in positions that they don't blow off and produce litter or clutter. But at the same time, our goal is to also make contact with the property owner, but also during Clean Sweep to address issues that they may have with other departments in the city, and we're more than happy to pass that information on to various departments.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hutchinson.
Yeah, political signs again.
Yes, sir.
How tall? How tall can they be? I mean, you addressed how far back from, you know, right-of-way, but how tall can the political signs be? How high can you, I mean, can you have one 45 feet high?
In terms of control, I'm going to defer that one over to the city attorney, but generally speaking, you know, in a residential area, you really don't want a 32, which is a 32-square-foot sign, it's a 4-by-8-foot sign. You generally don't want that. However, you're fringing on the free speech issue, I believe, in which there is, there is a manner of control, you know, by the ordinance. But again, that's why we're addressing them in right-of-ways, and if a person has its private property, I believe that can become a free speech issue.
We definitely have a free speech issue, but we also have a preemption by state law. If they're 32 square feet or smaller, then they're allowed to be there. So you're going to see them that size for sure.
And I imagine something similar holds true for the number of signs that are in a residence's front yard.
That is their right.
Okay, any more questions for Mr. Plisca?
I'm sorry. I had one more, and we talked about it when we were talking about signs. Who can remove the political signs so that we can perhaps keep some people out of trouble?
Of course, the private property owner, if the particular party did not ask for permission, the private property owner is allowed to remove, of course, debris on their property. And again, any property owner can contact the city staff if it is indeed located in the visibility triangle or within the right-of-way. We will be glad to remove them.
And removing someone's sign is, that isn't on your property, is not necessarily okay, is that correct?
I would not...
I can't take Ms. Reese's sign from somewhere and put it somewhere it's not supposed to be to get her in trouble. Well, I guess I could. If I get caught, I'm in trouble, right?
That sounds like criminal mischief, so yes.
Now, let me clarify one other thing. The code enforcement officers cannot go on private property if the sign is legally placed.
No.
As far as we're concerned. If the owner doesn't want it there, it's going to be up to the owner to remove that sign. We will not...
That is correct.
...be able to remove that sign. They'll have to remove it or they'll have to get with the campaign office and have them remove it.
Correct. Because again, nine and a half feet throughout the city is generally right-of-way, and that is owned by the city. So that is why we prefer to remove them from right-of-way, because then they are not transpassing.
Anything further, Councilmember Branson?
I'm through with my criminal mischief.
Councilmember Sutton?
I think I can speak for all the councils, say thank you for the efforts that you all do for Halton City. We appreciate it very much.
Mr. Plisca, do you have anything further to present on the report under item number four, the update on Clean Sweep?
Yes, sir. I'd like to make one more announcement. As of today, we have put on the city's webpage a complaint form that you can fill out and file through email on any code enforcement issue. So it is available on the web.
Okay. Well, thank you for your report on the Operation Clean Sweep. I'm a big supporter of that. I think anything we can do to increase the appearance of our city is a positive thing. I'm very pleased to see from the very beginning of this program, and it continues to be today, and I'm sure it will continue to be throughout the program, that the focus is not on writing tickets and generating money for the city. The focus is on identifying problems and in getting those problems abated. And I know a lot of effort is being made by your staff and others, employees of the city, to help people understand what the codes are and why it's important for them to be in compliance. So we're not out there just to create a problem for somebody or write tickets or anything like that. We're there to improve the quality of visual aesthetics in our city and bring our properties in compliance with the codes we already have.
That's great.
Before, you're seated, and you may wish for your staff to be seated, we do have a citizen who has asked to speak on the subject, and he may have a question for you. Mr. Ecklin? And while he's coming up here, I'll save him the time of, this is Mr. Ray Ecklin, 2532 Oakwood Terrace. I think we've seen Mr. Ecklin up here a time or two before. And Mr. Ecklin, you wish to address the council on this Clean Sweep issue. And you have six minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, I want to commend the staff that, of course, do a good job. It was a very frustrating job. I spent some time visiting with them. We did a story on their procedures last year on haltoncitycitizen.com. I took the liberty of taking the report that's before you, the multi-page layout that is now public information, and I took that yesterday for 53 minutes, and I ran those addresses through the Tarrant Appraisal District to find out, I wanted to know what kinds of properties these were that are causing the problems. Are they a single family? Are they owner-occupied? Or are they rental property? As we all know, the rental ordinance will be coming up soon. It is currently, I understand, before the city's attorney is being codified, since it's been done with the P and Z. But anyway, I wasn't able to get this information last year when I asked for it, but now this is the kind of information, and the data chart that you saw that they provided is very good to help analyze what kinds of problems we have. The area I was concerned about was who is causing the problems. Who, meaning owner-occupied or rental or commercial. So that's why we have the three little charts that I gave you there. The first one shows us, and let me add this warning, I may have made a mistake, but I tried not to on my data. You have a bigger staff than I do, so if you want to go over it, that's fine. Basically, it looked like 10% of the properties cited were commercial properties, 40% of them were non-owner occupied, and 50% of them were owner-occupied properties of the single family. I would like to add for your information, and I neglected to bring it, but it will be on my website this evening before I go to bed, is the mobile home park. I deleted it out of the whole discussion on these charts, and it's dealt with on a separate chart. What I discovered in there was the mobile home park that was cited caused 23% of the violations in that entire region of District 5, when you did the math. So that shows us that we have a problem in mobile home parks, maybe. Okay? The second chart shows us the number of violations. I didn't just look at the number of properties, I looked at the number of violations. 56% of those were in owner-occupied properties, 34% of them were non-owner occupied, and again, 10% of them were in the commercial district. What does that tell us? Well, we believe, and we've been told, that 40% of rental, of homes in Halton City are rental properties. The national average is between 38 and 40%, so maybe that's fine. I suppose Westover Hills has a lower percentage than Halton City, but, you know, I think we may be in fact around 40%. If 40%, it looks like this would tell us that the owner-occupied properties are causing more problems, verbatim, I mean, per ratio than the non-owner occupied properties. I'm sure it can be debated, it probably can go by neighborhood, there's a lot of different things, but I think it bears thinking about as we move forward with our rental ordinance. What is the purpose, you know, why are we over there making this rental ordinance? We felt like, I believe in the discussions, that people felt like these rental properties were causing all the problems, but your own data may not show that. Or it may show that they're just as bad or just as good as owner-occupied properties, which I think the last chart does show us. The number of violations non-owner occupied is 38%. The number of violations owner occupied is 62%. I took the commercial completely out for this and just said houses, right? And I found out that, it appears that tenants aren't any more messy or less messy than people own their house next door. So you guys have to control your staff, you can do whatever you want. I think the data that you have before you bears looking at. I looked at it for what I wanted to look at about, which was owner occupied versus rental.
Mr. Ecklin, before, I'm sorry to interrupt. I don't want to violate open me, this is, we're talking about Clean Sweep, not about the rental ordinance, right?
Well, that's exactly right. This is where the data comes from.
I'm hearing rental ordinance an awful lot here.
Okay. Clean Sweep's a great thing.
Okay. I don't want to violate.
It helps us. Clean Sweep's a great thing. The database that Clean Sweep provided to the city is very, very important.
All right.
Okay? Thank you. Anyway, I've watched the staff in the last couple of years. It is a frustrating procedure, Clean Sweep, code enforcement overall. You know, I have my little things that I do every day, and I've called staff numerous times, including today, I called the police department about an item. So it's a frustrating job. I'm sure everybody's well aware of that, and, but it's through that effort that we can make the city. Some of those pictures are in my neighborhood, and we all appreciate that. I have been cited again, okay, just for the record, but we'll get it taken care of.
Mr. Ecklin, you have 30 seconds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and we'll see you soon.
Okay, Councilmember Branson?
Actually, I'd like for Mr. Ecklin to go back, if the city attorney can keep me out of trouble while I ask this. I'm just curious as to why he would pull the trailer park out of the statistics, because to me, that does, that's not logical. So, can he explain his logic on pulling those numbers out without us getting?
I'd be happy to, well, just, just a minute. Wait a second.
Can he explain that, Mr. Olson, without us getting into trouble since he brought it up?
Absolutely. We're, we're on an agenda item here on Clean Sweep, not the rental ordinance.
On Clean Sweep, he used the, since he used the Clean Sweep data to prepare his charts.
If you, if you want more information on that, you may ask the question, yes.
Since he used the Clean Sweep data to prepare his charts, he removed part of the Clean Sweep data from his charts to prepare these statistics, and I'm rather interested in how statistics are acquired, since that's sort of what I do for a living.
Okay.
And I'm interested in knowing why he would pull part of the data out, because in my mind, that skews the percentages because it lowers the denominator. So, if you could explain why you pulled those out, that would, that might help me understand your logic behind your graphs, even though they're good graphs. I'm just curious as to why you would pull that out.
Okay, if you would, go ahead.
Soon she's ready, I'll be happy to. I pulled it out for two reasons, Madam Councilmember. One is, I ran out of time, okay? And two, two, well, you know, I have to do some more time, right? And two, the mobile homes are not considered single-family homes, the same as the house up and down your street.
Now, is that, is that the case, Mr. Plisca, or trailer, or trailer homes not considered in the, uh, single-family homes?
They are considered single-family dwellings, and I, I'm confused too, since most of the trailers in the park are rentals.
Thank you, thank you. That's, that's where I was headed.
Okay, uh, uh, Mr. Ecklin, thank you for your answer.
Well, just a minute, I'd like to disagree with what he said, because when we discussed the ordinance in the back room, right, that way, just a minute.
Wait, wait, hey.
They took, they took the mobile homes out and said they won't be a single-family.
Wait just a second.
Okay.
Everybody wait just a second.
That's why I said that.
You got a minute and a half.
I, I'm simply, in the back room, the, the mobile homes will not be included in the other ordinance, okay? And because they weren't considered single-family. Single-family homes would be considered. So, I took that information that I gathered in that side of the front door and used it over here and said, if those aren't going to be single-family, then I'm not going to consider those here.
Okay, so you're documents.
And second of all, I did take the numbers, which I didn't bring with you, and I told you I neglected to bring them, but I will have them posted. I took the number of the properties and put them back into the figure, so that you can see 23% of them are in that one mobile home park.
Thank you, Mr. Ecklin. A comment, and then we're gonna wrap this up.
Okay.
And back to Mr. Plisca, if he has anything in addition. Thank you, Mr. Ecklin.
I appreciate your graphs, but I'm concerned with their presentation in that since we were not talking about the ordinance, we were talking about the, the addresses that you ran through from Clean Sweep, and if these are considered single-family homes, then in my mind, those should be included as single, if they're rental, they should be rental; if they're property owners, they should be property owners, and not co-mingle in ordinance that we haven't seen yet with the data that the code enforcement individuals provided us.
I'm going to, Mr. Ecklin, thank you for your comments. After we're through tonight, the two of you, if you have further discussion, please feel free to do so. I think we're bogged down here in conversation that's just kind of spinning our wheels. Uh, Mr. Plisca, do you have any final comments before we move on to the next item?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make an announcement that our sixth district of Clean Sweep, as I said in the pre-council, is the commercial corridors within the city. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. With that, we move on to the consent agenda, and we have pulled off item number seven and eight, so we're talking only about item number five, which is the minutes, and item number six, which is the second reading of an ordinance amending the, for year oh six budget. So, members of the council, I'm ready for a motion regarding the consent agenda consisting of items number five and six. Chris Holcomb, Councilmember Holcomb, and then Councilmember Reese.
Thank you, Mayor White. I move to approve consent, including numbers five and six.
Councilmember Reese?
That would be for a second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda consisting of items number five and six, if you'll register your vote, please. And that is a unanimous vote to approve that motion. Item number seven has been pulled off for individual discussion, and Mr. Mur, would you lead us out into discussion regarding the Charter Review Committee?
Certainly. Thank you, Mayor. Three years ago, city council asked a citizen committee to review the charter, and a citizen committee did that, and two years ago, there was a charter election that was, that was held on February 7th, 2004. And most of those recommendations failed during the charter election. The, it is good practice to review the city's charter. I think the election from two years ago was largely politicized because of the, the recall, which is on the same ballot. And what I talked to the council about the last workshop was to consider convening another committee to look at the charter, and let's take another, a crack at amending some of the issues and getting some of them, some of the stuff that certainly that's out, out of sync with state law, get them back into, back in line. The ordinance, excuse me, the resolution that's before you is something, it's a resolution that was similar to what was done at the last Charter Review Committee. It's a calls for each elected official to appoint a single individual. It calls for no previous council member or, or their spouse to be on the committee. Calls for, once, once the committee decides on a particular item, as far as whether to recommend it or not recommend it, that, once that decision's made by the committee, they can't come back and revisit it. But those are the similar things that I carried forward from the resolution. There is, from the staff standpoint, from my standpoint, there's no expectation that the council endorse this. It's just a, a start to see where we went from here. You can certainly amend it, add to it, take away from it. It was just a place to get us started. It's, my, my original intent was to have the committee finish their work by July of this year, to have a recommendation before the council, and if there was going to be an election, that they would call an election in late August for, for a November election. But that'll largely depend on the council and largely depend on the committee on how, how they work. So, with that, I'll take any questions, any comments?
Just again, for sake of clarity for our citizens, the way this process works, if I understand it, each member of the council appoints a member to that committee. That review committee takes a look at the charter, evaluates it, and comes to some conclusion about what they want to recommend to the council. The council then takes that recommendation and makes a decision whether or not to take those recommendations and, or to modify them if they choose and call for an election or not.
That's correct.
Okay. Before we start making any comments, do we have any questions for Mr. Mur on, on the line of what, what he just said? Councilmember Sutton?
Yeah, just a point of clarification. I believe, Tom, in the last election, that the out of sync with state law resolutions passed.
I think a couple of those things were, were dealt with.
That one passed.
Yeah.
And so, from my knowledge, there is nothing in our charter that's out of sync with state law at this point, because that one.
There may not have been at the time, I can't, I can't answer that now.
Can't vouch for right now, but, but we don't knowingly know anything that's out of.
That is correct.
There is.
Okay, thank you.
There are some things that are out of sync with state law, because state law has changed since.
Oh, okay.
Charter amendments.
All right, thank you for that clarification.
Right, that was my comment, that, that there are some things that have changed with it.
Okay, but before we get into any discussion about this item any further by the council, we have two members of the audience who have asked to address the council. First, Mr. Bob Watkins. And, Mr. Watkins, you know what we always ask, give us your name and address for the record, and you have six minutes.
Bob Watkins, 614 Blispruce Circle. It was discussed in the back room. It was brought up that limiting council, former councilmember, former mayor's, former spouses of those is not the best idea in the world. Last, last time, they even limited anybody that'd ever been on a board. Now, I was on the previous two charter boards, amendment boards, and I sat in, I suppose, on every one of the last meetings. And I will say that the integrity and honesty of all three of the committees was beyond reproach. I felt a big gaping hole in knowledge in the last one. I just, I don't know where you come from when you put a group of, I don't care how nice people they are, put a group of people in there that haven't got a clue about what's happened previously. That's, that's a big item. There were, there were discussions sometime lasted 30 or so minutes on an item that anybody that'd ever been to a charter, the two previous charter, knew that those had already been discussed. One thing was discussed, excuse me, quite extensively, was something that was written on the, on the literature that that Charter Review Committee had the last one, which was wrong. The, the nepotism, the nepotism rule, which I was very familiar with, was, was denied that there would be, you could not serve on a committee or a board if you had a spouse that was on the council. That's the way the charter was written originally. It was voted to change it, to where, to, to leave it that way, instead of putting the words "paid" in there, and the city secretary at the time changed the charter to reflect the opposite of what the vote was. So, they sat around and discussed that for 30 minutes, nobody really had any clue that that's what, what was occurring. So, what I'm getting at is, and also, I don't believe you just need to put everybody on there that knows everything. You need to have, you need to have some people on there that's got some experience, and you need some people on there that haven't got any experience, so that they can go on from year to year. I think that there should be a little rollover on the people that are on the board. I wouldn't be completely opposed to the entire board that was there last time, was the exact same board that served this time, because the knowledge that they picked up during that process and since that time, I think is invaluable. I think one of the things that was discussed was when the election, be it, if I'm not incorrect, well, I, I know this is the way it was done, I don't know what's, the way it should be done. The committee pretty well sits down on the first couple of nights and decides what all they're gonna look at. The last one looked at the whole thing, read it sentence by sentence. The two previous ones had X amount of items that we were gonna look at, and pretty quick you decided whether you were gonna be able to have it in November, or whether you wasn't gonna be able to have it in November. That's, that is, and you mentioned that there at the last, that it. I think that's it. I, I'd like, there, there are several things, there's state law, there's state law changes. I think, I think their, their charter should be looked at every two years, if nothing else, to take care of the, to clean up the, the state, the things that the state have changed. And you all know that I'd like to have the EDC board membership looked at. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Our next speaker, Mr. Mike Stewart. Okay, you forego your request. Thank you very much. Members of the council, any further discussion on this item before I call for a motion? Any questions or comments? Councilmember Sutton?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to start out this discussion. At first, whenever this idea was presented in pre-council two weeks ago, I was initially opposed to addressing the charter so soon, but I, but I really think that in retrospect, looking at a charter every two years or every four years is probably a wise idea, because you're getting the chance to make sure that this is, this is where the city's at. It, but it is the Constitution. It is the, the contract that the people have with the government of this city, and so I think it needs to be dealt with in a manner of respect, first of all, and also with knowledge and wisdom. And that's, leads me into the next section, which is that there's some stipulations in here. Mr. Watkins alluded to it, but stipulations that no former council member or spouse may sit on this committee. And while I understand that was done because the previous experience was that it got a little bit dicey at times. And so, I think that what it behooves us as council members to do is appoint people that don't have their objective to be dicey, but have their objective to do what's best for the city, and they're committed to work with each other to really look at the charter and, and look at it in a way that is objective as possible. Certainly, there's gonna be agendas, there are ideas out there. Ideas have consequences, and there is always gonna be this battle of ideas going on, but I think that that is a good place for those to take place, in a respectful manner, in a manner where we look at it and weigh the strength of the ideas, and then take a vote and go on as friends after that vote is taken. So, I would encourage my fellow council members that these stipulations, that no former council member or spouse may sit on this committee, that, that we maybe soften that and say preference should be given to new volunteers. Certainly, we want to have new volunteers that are interested, first of all, in the city. I, I think it behooves the membership of this Charter Review Committee to be people that are interested in the city, interested in what makes this city tick, and have a, an eye to the future on what it's gonna take Holton City to become successful five, 10 years down the road. I think they need to look at the charter in that regards and what's best for the city. Well, that takes a special type of people. Not everybody's interested in doing that and spending their Saturday morning or evening doing that, and so I want to make sure that we don't eliminate people that have that natural profile from this process. So, if my fellow member, fellow council members would consider softening that to where we say the preference is given to new volunteers, certainly, but that we don't exclude former council members and people that have served on boards and commissions.
Councilmember Hutchison?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank Mr. Watson for coming and speaking about this. The, this is a very important issue that we, we need to address, and I, I think that we ought to, I agree with Mr. Sutton, that we, it becomes incumbent upon the, the members of the council to not only choose people who are interested, but people who are knowledgeable about this, about this also. And therefore, I'm not opposed to softening the wording on this, to allow former members, and, and yet, at the same time, I think we, as council members, really need to think this through and make sure that we choose the right people, knowledgeable and interested people who are, who are gonna serve this committee. I think there is an expectation that we do finish this at some particular point in time, because that, that, this issue could go on and on and on and on. We could attack every, every point of the charter, or not attack every point of the charter, and we could, in effect, change the whole meaning of the charter if they wanted to. I just think it bears, it bears looking at because of, primarily because of state laws, and I, and I really believe that we need to be in line with state laws. I don't think the committee needs to, to limit itself, other than, other than to say that they want to accomplish this in an expedient amount of time. They want to not expedite the process, but, but do it in such a way that it will, it will benefit, it will, it will fill in some of the gaps, if you will, that maybe state law has allowed us to change, and yet, clean up some of the process too, and make, make us function as a council and make the, and benefit the citizens of the city a little bit better. So, I'm certainly in favor of taking a look at it, but I, I think not only interested but knowledgeable folks at the same time. Thank you.
Councilmember Lanford?
Thank you, Mayor White. I, I just want to say, I, I, in general, concur with the two former speakers, that I, I don't think it's absolutely necessary that, that we eliminate anybody that might possibly have some experience in such things from, from the committee. I just, just for information, my intent is to name someone who has never served on any kind of city board or anything, have in mind a very capable citizen that I've already spoken to and has indicated a willingness to do that. I'm not sure he meets all of these. We'll, we'll dig that, dig into that, make sure that, that he's qualified on that, that count. The other thing that I would ask us to consider for, for this resolution is in section The other thing that I would ask us to consider for, for this resolution is in Section Three, where we have the sentence, "Once proposed amendments and/or recommendations have been voted on by the board, the board shall not reconsider any such amendment or recommendation again." We, we talked about that in pre-council and recognized that that's, has some benefit and, and is also, has some, some downside. And I think that Councilmember Branson had an excellent suggestion to say that once the, a proposed amendment or recommendation has been voted on, they could only be voted on one more time, and, and put a, put a limit on that. And certainly, my suggestion would be that, that they do this at the last meeting, that before they make the final draft to, or final recommendation, that, that each and every previous vote be reconsidered one time and one time only. If we could write that into there, I, I would support this resolution, and, and that would certainly in Section Two, just strike that sentence that says, "No former council member or spouse may sit on this committee." Just strike it all together. That's my recommendation.
Let me, let me restate what you were talking about, just so that we're... Brenda, I don't know if you're taking notes on this or not. The last sentence of Section Three shall be, you're proposing to revise it to "Once proposed amendments and/or recommendations have been voted on by the board, the board can reconsider any such amendment or recommendation one time, one time only."
One additional, one additional time.
One additional, one additional time.
At the last meeting.
I don't know, we need to, I don't even know if we need to confine them to that last meeting. I think that was just a recommendation, if that's what they do.
They were clear in the beginning, but they...
Okay, do you have clarity on, on that issue, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Councilmember Branson, Councilmember Hutchinson, Councilmember Sutton, in that order, please.
Okay.
And then when they finish speaking, I'm ready for a motion.
I'll try and be real brief. I certainly hope that the citizens that have listened to the discussion about former board members, council members, et cetera, don't take that to mean that that's what they need to be. Like, Mr. Lanford, I intend to appoint a citizen who I consider very, extremely capable and knowledgeable and very interested in what's going on in the city, just hasn't been secure enough to step up and say, "Pick me, pick me." So I want to encourage all citizens, whenever you say the time is right to fill out an application, just because we've been talking about council members and previous board members, don't forget to listen to the rest of it that says, "We also want citizens that have never served in a capacity like this before," because we need to groom new leaders and have new individuals interested in what's going on with the city. I think this would be an excellent place to get started on that.
Okay, Councilmember Hutchinson.
Yes, I want to just follow up on what Mr. Sutton said, Mr. Muir, as you were making the changes to the charter there. I think, and Mr. Lanford also said this, I think we ought to strike that sentence that says, "No former council member or spouse shall serve on this committee."
Yeah, I've already got that.
Okay, I just, I just want to make sure that that...
Yeah, I was only dealing with Section Three when I was talking about that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sutton.
Thank you. Back in pre-council, we had a, a little bit of discussion from a former Charter Committee member that stated that some of the rules may not have been entirely clear whenever they started this review process out. And I just want to encourage the staff, if this should pass, that, that we ensure that our members understand this, going into what the ground rules for making these changes are this time, so that we don't have any semblance of, "I didn't know it was supposed to be that way," so that, that doesn't occur again.
Okay, I'm ready for a motion now regarding the wishes of the council on item number seven, and that is the establishing of a Charter Review Committee, and establishing the duties of the committee in providing for an effective date. And I believe Councilmember Hutchinson came first, and then Councilmember Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I propose that we, excuse me, I make a motion that we pass on the resolution for establishing a Review Committee, 2006-05-01, with, with the proviso that we make the changes that we have recommended here before I made this resolution.
Okay.
You're talking, you're talking about the changes, the deletion of the sentence in Section Two, and the revision of the last sentence in Section Three.
Thank you, Mr. Muir, for clarifying that. Yes, please.
Councilmember Reese.
That would be for a second.
Have a motion and a second to approve with the specified amendments to the original document. Do we have any discussion on the motion?
Does anybody want me to reread what we've got, or, I'm not suggesting we do, I just want to make sure everybody understands.
No one so wishes. Okay, members of the council, if you'll register your vote, please. It is a unanimous vote of the council to approve the establishing of a Charter Review Committee under the conditions specified. And now we move to item number eight, and this is the Solona Circle Drainage Improvement Project. And, Mr. Muir, if you would, introduce that for us, please.
While Mr. Fane is, well, he's there now. David, why don't you go ahead and tell, brief the council on the significance of this project?
Thank you, Mr. Muir. Mayor White, members of the council, before you is, we're asking that you award a bid for the Solona Circle Drainage Improvement Project. Staff received these bids and opened them on, I believe it was, yes, February the fifteenth of this year. We received four bids, and the lowest bid was $365,951. It is, it is within budget. And of course, we're very excited about this project. It is actually our, our first construction project since the adoption of our stormwater fee. And so here, again, we're very excited about that. Anyway, staff does recommend that council approve this, or award the bid to Sherman Hudson Utility Company.
Okay, members of the council, do you have questions for Mr. Fane in this regard? Councilmember Sutton, if you would, please.
Thank you. Back in pre-council, I thought you said something that was very significant, Mr. Fane. This bid came in considerably lower than some of the other bids, but you guys had an in-house bid that, that was very, very close to this one. You may just want to state that you feel like this bid is pretty authentic, based upon your own internal...
We didn't have a really in-house bid, but I've tried to maybe explain what, what was discussed in, in pre-council. We had four bids, and actually, we had, the three other bids, we, we felt like were very high. But what's really ironic, in my opinion, is according to our consultant engineer, Teague-Noll and Perkins, their preliminary engineering calculation was at $375,000, and the bid is actually at $365,000. And I think there was some question, why, why such a discrepancy? I really can't say why three other firms bid so high, but I feel like it is important to note that it is at $365,000, because I feel like this firm is a good firm, because we've checked their references, and they are within budget.
Yeah. The, the engineer's estimate they're referring to is, is an estimate the engineers give us prior to bidding. So it's not done, it'd be easy to do it afterwards.
Anytime, anytime we...
It'd be really easy to do it afterwards.
We, we look at budgets, when we, when we look at budgets, and actually, when we get into our budget process in a couple of months, our engineers, our consulting engineers very, plays a key role in our, our budget process, because they will give us engineering estimates based on what's out there, whether, whether today's dollars to, to lay a water line, or what's today's dollars to lay a stormwater line.
And, and not to under, just to stress the comment that he made, this is the first project with stormwater, and we're very excited about that. We, we told the citizens and the council that this was gonna be the first one, and, and it is, and we're ready to get, get after it.
There, Councilmember Sutton, Councilmember Reese, and then Councilmember Hutchinson.
I, I just wanted to clarify some concerns I did mention in pre-council, because, I mean, the bid, like you said, is considerably lower. One thing you didn't say that I want the citizens to know is, we're not reconstructing those pipes, we're putting brand-new ones in, and they're gonna be larger, right? Isn't that what you said?
Yes, that's correct. Yeah, they were undersized many years ago when it was first constructed. And yes, we are putting in the proper-sized pipes to carry, carry the stormwater to the proper location it needs to dump into.
Okay, and, and the bid that Teague-Noll and Perkins gave, you know, you feel real comfortable that these people will stay within, and we're not gonna have this huge list for Tom to have to come to us and get authorized, hopefully. I mean, I'm just, I'm just concerned with some of the other projects we've had, they've come in with Bid A, we've gone there, and it's cost us, and I just want to make sure.
Actually, most of, the vast majority of the public works projects have been run very, very well. It's, it's only been those, well, the rec center.
Right. Well, I want to...
It's the one everybody comes, comes to mind.
Because I, I know that's a big concern of a lot of people.
Right.
And I want them to understand, we're, we're looking at past and current, and...
Right, but the, the rec center is not the standard, though.
No.
And, and it's, and I know that's not what you're, you're saying. I just, I just want, I want to reassure you that the, this project, I think, will be run very similar to what a lot of the other projects are.
Just do it week to week.
They're run very tight, and, and we're gonna be on top of them.
Reassure me every week, and we'll be okay.
All right.
Yes, we, and I'd like to reassure you that also, you know, we have the utmost confidence in our consultant engineer and our city engineer. We're very fortunate, like Mr. Muir said, we usually are within budget, or under budget.
Well, I want to, to reinforce something you said. There is a little nervousness on the part of elected officials. I remember the Carson Street project, I remember the rec center.
Broadway.
I remember Broadway, and some of the challenges we've had. And now, you mentioned the senior center that's had a little glitch in it, so we're just want to be sure that we're gonna do good with this.
So far, it's not a money glitch yet, but...
Councilmember Hutchinson.
Well, I'm just, I was gonna mention the consulting from Teague-Noll and Perkins also. They're a very reputable company, and you had mentioned in pre-council that because they're the consulting engineers, that they're, and because they're a reputable company, we trust them implicitly. Now, I agree with the mayor, Mr. Muir, that, you know, we, we've stood on shaky ground here recently, but I've got the utmost confidence that we can get this, especially since we're coming in below budget, too. So, and this is what we budgeted for this year. So I'm excited about, this is the first, you know, stormwater utility project that we're getting, and, you know, gotta start someplace.
Yes. Okay, no one else has their light on wishing to speak? I'm ready for a motion regarding item number eight, the awarding of the Solona Circle Drainage Project to Sherman Hudson Utility Company. Councilmember Lanford and Councilmember Sutton.
I move to approve the bid of Sherman Hudson Utility Company, Bid Number B 2006-05-004.
Okay, we have a motion. Councilmember, who did I say?
Sutton.
Councilmember Sutton.
Yes, that's for a second.
Right, okay. We have a motion and a second to approve. Do we have any discussion on the motion? Okay, there is none, if you'll register your vote, and that, too, is a unanimous vote to approve. We move now to the Vista Citizens Forum. Brenda, do we have any, anyone who's filled out a request card?
I have no one that's filled out a request form, but I don't know if anybody wants to speak, the three-minute time limit.
Okay. If we have anyone who wishes to speak at this time, if you will indicate that, since there has been no cards given, the time limit is three minutes on this one. Okay, if you would, go ahead and come up to the front and be prepared to give us your name and address for the record. Do you have a yellow card that you had filled out?
I didn't, I didn't know how it works.
If you would, hand that to Councilmember Sutton, and we'll go ahead, since this is your, since this is your first time. Now, before you do, I've got a legal disclaimer. I've got... ...or staff. Each speaker must limit his or her comments to the subject matter listed on the speaker's request form, and must refrain from personal attacks toward any individual. And you will be given a six-minute time period tonight. Council cannot discuss or debate any issue you bring forth at this time, nor can we take any formal action tonight, since this was not a posted item on the agenda in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Law. So if you would, give us your name and address for the record, and tell us what subject you wish to, to speak on, and your six minutes begins.
Okay, my name's Rochelle Rhodes, I live at 3612 Swan Street. I'm new at this totally, so I am so lost. But I wanted to find out about getting something put on the agenda. I don't know how to do that, but it's in reference to a skate park. Have a skate park put in, preferably Little Fossil Creek, but some place for the children to go that aren't in the normal sports, football, basketball, baseball. There's tons of kids out there that are into skating, whether it be skateboarding, rollerblading, biking, any of that, the facility would be able to accommodate all of that. And I wanted to find out about getting this put on an agenda, so that I guess I could have an open discussion with you as to what all I need to have, like if I need to do a petition, how many signatures, or, or what information, facts from other cities that have the skate facilities, what I need to have, so that I can present it to you.
So because we cannot have discussion back and forth, I think the city manager may have a statement he can make legally...
Yeah.
...that might give you some indication of how to proceed from here.
I'm a little embarrassed. You left me a voice, you left me a phone message Friday.
Uh-huh.
Is that right?
Last week.
Okay, I've, I've still got it, I'm sorry. You'll hear from me.
Okay.
But let's, let's sit down and talk about it, and we'll see what the next step is.
I didn't know how to fill this.
But that's, that's all right.
Who'd have given it to?
That's all right, that's all right. But you'll, you'll hear from me in the next area.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have anyone else wishing to address the council at this time? Okay, there being none, we go forth into item number nine. Do we have any resignations from boards to be presented by members of the council tonight? Okay, there being none, do we have any appointment or reappointments to boards or commissions? Councilmember Clark.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to nominate Beverly Henson to the CCPD Crime Control Prevention District.
Position number...
Four.
Position number four. Okay, you've heard the recommendation, the request for ratification of this. If you would, at this time, register your desire on this ratification. And that is a unanimous vote by the, by the council who is present. I mentioned earlier in the meeting, when the announcements were being made, that I had an announcement that would be made later on in the meeting, and so I wished to, to make that announcement at this time. Last year, when I filed for a third term as mayor of Halltown City, I knew it would be my last term because of the term-limit provision of our charter. At that time, it was my intent to complete my third term, meaning that I would serve until May of 2007. Since that time, however, circumstances have changed in my life that make it appropriate for me to forego the final year on this third term. And I am therefore stepping aside as mayor of Halltown City a year early. I am announcing at this time my resignation as mayor of Halltown City. Now, I'm doing this tonight to allow time for a special election to be called, where this unexpired term can be included in the upcoming May ballot. In the interest of clarity, I need to say a few things regarding this decision. Number one, this decision was not something that has happened suddenly. This process has been unfolding over the last three or four months, and it has been thought through very carefully and with input from wise and trusted advisors. I'm not doing this because I'm moving out of Halltown City, I'm not stepping aside so I can seek another political office, I'm not stepping, I'm not taking this step tonight because I have a health problem, and I'm not resigning because of any legal or moral development in my life that would require my resignation. I'm taking this step tonight for three reasons. Number one, and most important, is my family. My wife's health has been requiring more of my time and attention, and this is the lady that stood at my side for forty-five years. It will be Friday, March the third. She stood at my side for forty-five years and has supported me unselfishly in my ministry, in my business, and as an elected official. And I'm convinced it is appropriate tonight that I take this step, that I can give the necessary time now and later with what we see developing, to help her with her increasing needs. In addition to this family consideration, I also have five grandchildren that are growing up, that I really need to be spending some more time with. The second reason is my business. I need to be concentrating more time and energy on my business, which is becoming increasingly complex and demanding. Stepping aside at this time will free up the fifteen to twenty hours a week that I spend being mayor, and will allow those hours to be refocused on my business... spend being mayor and will allow those hours to be refocused on my business as well as on my family. And then the third reason is personal. I'm sixty-four years old, with more years behind me than I have in front of me. I've spent eleven years as an elected official in this community, six as a Byrdville School trustee, and five as mayor of Halton City. In addition to that, I have spent all of my adult life in some form of public leadership, and I believe it's appropriate at this time in my life as I listen to what my heart is telling me. And I learned a long time ago, listen to what your heart is telling you. And as I've done that, it is appropriate that I retire from public service and focus my time and energy on my family and on my business. Now, as I step aside, I want to say how profoundly grateful I am to the citizens of Halton City. You've elected me three times as your mayor, and you've allowed me the privilege of serving you in this capacity. I'm truly humbled by the confidence and the trust you've placed in me and by the support and the encouragement you've given me during these five years. And during this time, I've made every attempt to lead with dignity and honor, to lead with vision and integrity, and to be the kind of mayor you can be proud of. My tenure as mayor has seen more than its share of challenges and turbulence, but I leave knowing that these matters have been dealt with decisively, and that Halton City has emerged a stronger and a better city with a clearer vision of what this city can be. And so I step aside a year early with the overwhelming sense of satisfaction and accomplishment and pride in the progress I've seen this city make during the time I've served as mayor. Knowing what is already on the drawing board and what is developing, I can tell you there are many good things yet to come for Halton City. And I believe we're on the brink of even greater accomplishments over the next five years. My stepping aside a year early will give the next mayor the opportunity to get a year's head start in providing leadership and to giving voice to the vision and to using the influence of his office to those opportunities as they unfold. And I can tell you, based on my experience, something I learned that I wasn't aware of when I came on board, continuity at the mayor level when you've got these longer projects and important projects is important. Making my decision to step aside was made a lot easier because I believe I can see who will be following me as mayor, and that, of course, is subject to the will of the voters. And I'm very pleased with what I think I see. This individual is not a handpicked successor. This is a person who has emerged in his own right, is capable and worthy and willing to lead our city to the next level of significance and progress. Now, I would be remiss, as I step aside at mayor, if I didn't, as mayor, if I fail to express my deepest appreciation to two very special groups of people that I haven't mentioned yet. I've talked about the citizens. There are two other groups. The first is to the city manager and his staff. My role as mayor has been made a lot easier by the knowledge and experience and partnership of our staff and of our employees who have worked hard, often under difficult circumstances and with, often with limited resources, to see that this city accomplishes its stated purpose in a proud and a progressive manner. The second group I need to say thank you to is my colleagues, my fellow elected officials. It has been truly an honor to serve as a partner with these men and women in our quest to be responsible and visionary and make honorable decisions for the progress and improvement of our city. To Jim, Chris, and Bill, and Dale, and Richard, and Kim, and Diane, thank you. Thank you for being such a blessing to me personally in this leadership team we have as we've sought to make progress for the city. And I just want to say I love you guys, and I mean that from the depth of my heart. So again, I want to thank everyone, as I come to this point, for the opportunity to serve as your mayor for these last five years. And with that, I want to turn to our city attorney. Believe there are some issues regarding this that he wishes to address from a legal standpoint. And after he has finished, members of the council, if you have any questions for him regarding any of the answers he's given or something he may not have covered, you'll have an opportunity to do that. Mr. Olson, I might just segue into this by just throwing out two or three questions. Does, does the council need to take any action either now or later on this resignation? When is my resignation effective, and what are the options we have before us as we proceed from here? So, Mr. Olson?
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Yes, this does raise a number of issues that we need to deal with. I want to make sure the council and the citizens are aware of how we proceed from here. With the mayor resigning, we've got a couple provisions that, that kick into action. One, when there's a vacancy on the city council, it must be filled by a special election called by the city council. With the mayor resigning his seat, that creates a vacancy. He has another year left on his term, so the city council will have to call a special election as soon as is, is practical, and that would be called for the next uniform election date, which is May thirteenth, the same date as the general election. So we will need to have a meeting in the near future.
And I'll get with the council and set that up.
Okay. To call a special election to fill the vacancy, and the, the election for the vacancy will be for the remaining term on the mayor's seat, which will be until May of two thousand and seven. Although the mayor has resigned, because we call a special election to fill the seat under state law, under what is known as the holdover doctrine, that the constitution requires that all elected officers continue to serve until their successors are duly qualified, and that occurs after an election and swearing in of the newly-elected person. So the mayor will continue to serve as the mayor of Halton City until we have the election and his successor is elected and sworn in after the votes are canvassed and the oath of office is taken. As to whether the council is required to accept the resignation, that is the recommendation. You cannot take action tonight, it's not posted on the agenda, but if you call a special meeting to accept the resignation, that would be appropriate procedure. If the council fails to accept the resignation of the mayor, then it is effective eight days from today when the resignation is received by the city council. And after that eight days, then there's a legal vacancy for purposes of calling a special election. So you either will act, actually formally accept the resignation, or it will go into effect automatically after eight days. Let me see some other issues that I was thinking about. One of the issues that probably should be addressed, the question came up a couple of years ago when we had a recall election under the holdover doctrine, how come when we had councilmembers who were recalled, how come they didn't continue to serve? They were recalled, removed from office, and if the citizens remember, we went through a brief period of time where we didn't have a quorum of the council to conduct business. Well, one of the exceptions to the holdover doctrine is where an official is legally removed from office by the will of the voters. The recall procedure is set forth in Halton City's charter, and it provides for the citizens to determine whether or not elected officials should be removed from office. And once the election was held and the citizens voted to do that, then the case law provides that those persons who are removed do not continue to serve, and we'd have vacancies in office at that point in time. I gave that opinion two years ago after the recall election, and I informed the citizens at that time that we had requested an attorney general's opinion to try to confirm that, but unfortunately, attorney general didn't give us an opinion prior to the recall election, so we had to proceed upon my advice. And then we finally got the opinion from the attorney general in April of that year, and he agreed that once you're removed by recall, you do not, do not continue to serve under the, under the holdover provision. So we'll be looking for the mayor to continue to serve. He will continue to act as mayor, nothing will change. He will be the mayor, he will be the presiding officer at all meetings, he will perform all functions of the mayor. So until May thirteenth, nothing will change in the role of the mayor.
Actually, it'll probably be May twenty-second when he's sworn in. Is it at the election or when he's sworn in?
When they're sworn in, that's correct.
Sworn in, so it'd be, and we're tentatively scheduled to have that on May twenty-second.
The, the process is, May thirteenth will be the election. Assuming we don't have a runoff to the position, then the votes will have to be canvassed by the city council in accordance with law, and then the person who is declared elected will have to take the oath of office at that point in time. The mayor, our current mayor, will cease under his duties, and the new mayor will take.
But, but he'll continue serving as mayor until?
He will continue until, as much time as it is. If there is a runoff election, Mayor White will continue to serve until a runoff election.
Right.
That's correct. So where do we go from here, calling the special election? Whenever that's called, the election code has various provisions as to what happens depending upon when this council calls the special election to fill the vacancy. And there may be some questions about when someone can file for the, the new mayor seat, and that will depend on when the election's called. And I, I looked at the law today. If the special election is called at least seventy days in advance, then the deadline to file is sixty-seven days before the election. If it's called between thirty-six and sixty-nine days, then the deadline to file as a candidate is thirty-one days before the election. And if it's called no, no, sooner than thirty days before the election, the deadline is the fifth day after the election is called. So the, the filing deadline for candidacy for this special election will depend on when the election is called. And Tom, you'll need to get with the council, set up a meeting so that they can adopt an ordinance calling the special election, and as soon as that's done, I'll, I'll give the council members and the citizens specific dates on when the filing deadlines will be. Mayor, I believe you also serve as a member of the Economic Development Corporation Board in your capacity as mayor. Because the mayor continues to serve as mayor, he will continue to serve on that board until his mayoral term is up. The Articles of Incorporation for the Economic Development Board provide that a member of the city council shall cease to be a director at the time he or she ceases to be a member of the city council, but is eligible for reappointment. ... desires, provided, the articles also provide that at least four councilmembers must be members of the board, so we have to make sure that at least four members of this body are members of the Economic Development Corporation. Those generally are some of the issues that are probably going to have to be addressed, and I just wanted to get the council and citizens an overview of, of these issues. If there are specific questions, I'll, I'll deal with them at the next meeting when we call a special election, but I just wanted to make that known right now because I'm sure there'll be a number of questions after this, this announcement that was just made.
Wayne, are you open to any member of the council asking you a question about anything you've said tonight?
About what I've just said, yes, within those parameters. I think that's, that's fair. I don't want to open this up to a discussion since we don't have this as a posted item, but if there are questions about what I've just informed the council, I'll be glad to address those right now.
Councilmember Hutchinson, your light is on. Do you have, you didn't, you didn't intend for it to be?
No, I didn't intend for it to be.
Okay. Okay, I think there are no questions based on this. Mr. Muir, will you tell us again what you said a moment ago about, I believe you need to turn, oh, your light is on.
I just turned it on. I'll be getting with the council and trying to determine a, a, a date to have a meeting to call a special election. I'm not sure waiting till the next regular council meeting is in our best interest. We need to move quickly. It will probably not be this week, it'll probably be, we'll be talking about it sometime early next, but I'll be getting with each of you to discuss that.
Okay, I believe we have completed all items on the agenda. There still is a need for an executive session meeting, so at this time, the council will move into executive session as authorized by the Texas Government Code, chapter five fifty-one, point oh seven one, point oh seven two, and oh seven four, and they will return to the council chamber to take action on any item that has, needs action taken. The Halton City Council is back in session, an open session, following executive session. The time is seven minutes after ten. There's no action to be taken on any matter discussed in executive session, therefore, this council stands adjourned.